... Mayor Spies.
And to the public, who stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Donetta? Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Howie?
Here.
Ms. Delay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Seven present.
All right. This is a meeting call to discuss some issues that we need to handle. And the superintendent's prepared to give reports. The first piece of business is the report of the superintendent. 3.1 Transportation Report. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report is provided by Rebecca Duda, who is a coordinator of Family Resource Center, who has been supporting our clerk, who has been the sole person handling transportation in our transition. And it was brought to her attention that, at present, we have students who are riding the bus to school, that who do not meet the walk zone criteria, that's detailed in our policy, and I attach the policy for your review, that of the three-quarter mile distance for our elementary students and a mile and a half for our middle school students, we have approximately 200 students, 200 or 200-plus students, who are currently on buses that are lower than that walking distance. However, the policy does articulate that in particular areas where there is heavy traffic and there are no sidewalks, that there could be special consideration given. So she's asking that we consider doing just a check and balance on that, and an audit, so to speak, our own internal audit, to determine what, who these students are, where the areas are. Because one of the things, I looked back in notes from previous school committee meetings, and one of the things that came up was that would it be beneficial for us to consider a crossing guard, working with the city in the next budget round, to look at those particular areas, so to see if that would be more cost-effective than adding additional buses? So that's one piece that she brought up. Additionally, she brought up that we have, we have about presently 80-plus students who are being bused out of their zone to the Boys and Girls Club after-school programs in the YMCA. And she would like to audit, you know, our own little audit ourselves, to ensure equity for all families, that we have children, that we do have offerings inside the zones for children, so we want to make sure that all the offerings are equitable, and that going forward, if we can reduce costs, we would do that. What our goal would be is to assess this, bring it back to the committee, and then determine if we want to make changes for the 2019-2020 school year. We would send out notices before the close of school to all the families that would be impacted, so that they can make their plans for the next school year. So I submit this to you as a report of progress.
Any questions, Ms. Doherty?
I think it sounds like a great idea to take a look at the transportation, see if there's efficiencies we can find that will save us money, and to make sure that we are offering equitable transportation services to all our students. So I would be in favor, I'd make a motion to support the recommendation.
Second. I'd like to, second, Ms. Donetta, you have a question?
I appreciate, you know, the fact that you want to locate us, but I admit, we really need to concentrate on that, that, you know. Our job is, oh, there you go. Our job is to service the children of Lowell, and, you know, nobody wants, and I don't care if you have a crossing guard, I would not want my son or daughter crossing Andover Street, or Westford Street, or Chilmsford Street. And so I know that the policy says, you know, and when there's no sidewalks, and if we have a bus that's going to that section of the city, that for whatever reason, that child is enrolled in the Boys Club or the Girls Club, and the parent needs us to offer that, we can't be so stringent that we don't service all of our kids as much as possible. So while I agree, you know, it is a good thing to look into, let's just, you know, keep in our mind that our role here is really to service all the kids to the best of our ability. However, since you did bring up transportation, first question is, can we, Mayor, request the city auditor to work with someone from either Connor Baldwin, Heather Vani, or Rodney Conley, and somebody from, you know, Mr. Hall, or one of our legal team? I would like to go through the transportation, regular education transportation contract, and see, you know, how many buses we have, what we're being billed for, and what that contract, you know, stated when we, when it got awarded. You know, it's still in the back of my mind that we had a transfer request for $478,000 that disappeared, and that just kind of eats at the back of my mind. So is there, can I make a motion that we?
First of all, there was a motion on the floor by Ms. Doherty. It wasn't seconded, was it? Mr. Howie seconded it, okay. So will you repeat the motion, please?
It was to support the acting superintendent's recommendation to do an audit and present filings at a later date?
Do you want a roll call on this? For this motion?
Mr. Donetta?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Back to you. Do you want to make, Ms. Donetta? Do you want to make a motion regarding that?
No, actually, Ms. Martin just gave me a good idea, so (laugh) I will, I will wait and ask for a meeting of the Finance Subcommittee instead. Thank you.
All right. Any other question regarding this matter? Mr. Dakota, I believe you, did you have your end up? We all said, all right. I need a motion to accept this, the Transportation Report as a report of progress. My Ms. Donetta, seconded by Ms. Martin. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Next, under new business. We have the consideration of a contract and appointment of acting superintendent's recommendation to appoint Billy Joe Turner as interim School Business Administrator, interim Assistant Superintendent for Finance. Before I ask you to accept this, are there any questions we want to ask the acting superintendent? Mr. Howie?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I just want to welcome her here. I think I'm going to support her nomination for this job. I just feel like I should say that Dr. Kefawi recommended, by email to me, not too long ago, so I hope we all support this fine lady and move on. Thank you.
Any other questions to the superintendent? Ms. Delay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering, was this been a negotiation being accepted, or when Dr. Kefawi was here? Or is this a?
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, this was negotiated when Dr. Kefawi was here.
Okay. And was the salary accepted as, do you know what the salary was accepted back then?
It's a salary that's, that's in the current contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Delay, any further questions? You all set?
All set, thank you, sir.
Any other questions? All right, I need a motion to approve acting superintendent's recommendation to appoint Billy Joe Turner as interim School Business Administrator and interim Assistant Superintendent for Finance. Motion to accept by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Donetta?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
4.2 has been withdrawn, correct? Madam Superintendent?
Yes, at the request of the candidate, the second contract has been removed.
Thank you. Next is 4.3.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
If I could, just to be sure, as we had approved the recommendation, I believe we also need to approve the contract for that position, for the interim Assistant Superintendent? We approved the recommendation, but we also have to approve the contract itself?
Actually, you're right. Okay.
Yeah, that wasn't me, that was Mr. Hall, but (laugh).
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
We appreciate him being here.
Do you want to read that? All right. We have the approval as acting Assistant Superintendent, and now we're approving the contract. Roll call.
Mr. Donetta?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move on from finance, just a question. I know there may be a delay in the start time. Have you reached out to the, you know, Council Delay, he brought a motion forward last week, and the city manager has offered any assistance? So are we working with the city? Do we have somebody from the finance team coming down and helping out at this point?
Not at this time, but I do have a meeting with the city manager tomorrow on another matter, so I can, I can bring that subject up. I have also communicated with Billy Joe Turner relative to her availability, and we'll be communicating with their superintendent tomorrow to determine if we can do some job sharing in the interim, to make sure that we can be up and running and in a good place.
But basically, the city manager's not going to assign anybody from her office, but what she's doing is making her people available on an as-need basis, based on what the superintendent has requested? And they've already had a number of meetings, correct, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. But good questions at this particular time. All right, next. Sorry, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, I just, I know, before we went back to the approval on the contract, we heard that the interim director of HR, the candidate, has declined, and I'm just wondering if we can get an update, because I know this committee voted to do a search several months ago for an HR, for a permanent HR director, and, and an HR audit, so I'm wondering if there's any status update on either of those items?
Madam Superintendent?
So I do, I do have an update on the HR audit. The, we have scheduled, Susan Mulligan, the HR director, and myself have scheduled for next week. I want to say it is on Tuesday. It's either Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, with the auditor, to review the process and get ready for the audit to begin. So that is scheduled, and that was scheduled today. So that's done. The, on the, the HR director, I have been, you know, just today, because we, we knew, we learned today of the decision not to go forward with the one-year contract, so I'm working with Attorney Hall, we'll be talking with HR, and bringing forward something for consideration to you, because I think the position is a pretty substantial position in the district, and, you know, knowing the pay scale that is there right now, we want to be able to get the best candidate, and so I'll be bringing some updates forward to you.
Ms. Martin? I'm sorry, Ms. Martin first.
Thank you very much. I know that, and I believe it's what Ms. Doherty is referencing, that we had passed a motion to hire a search firm to conduct that search. I'm curious, so that would be my first question, if we can move forward with that. But secondly, there are certain, and I don't know if this company would fall into this category, but there are HR firms that would be able to provide, like, an onsite interim for a year, who might be able to not only, you know, kind of begin that search and conduct that search, but also be able to, you know, be the onsite HR director, you know, for the year, you know, for a contracted, you know, amount, just as an option as you're investigating.
Madam Superintendent?
So I apologize, I misunderstood your, your initial inquiry. I know that Ms. Mulligan has reached out to the agency, and they've gotten, they've given her some paperwork relative to initiating that, so I know that is done. And I will reach out to her tomorrow about the other option.
Mr. Howie?
Thanks, Mayor. The short conversation I had with Ms. Turner was a lot about HR. I told her that's under her umbrella. I think when you get back your audit, you're going to see at least one clerk, maybe two clerks are needed in that office. If we could get maybe one clerk in there now, I bet you Ms. Turner could get us through a while on that job, because our clerks in that office, to me, have done a wonderful job. I just think they're hurting for help, Mayor. That's it. Thank you.
Also, just, you know, I did talk for a few minutes with the superintendent today, and I was going to send out a memo tomorrow, asking that the committee actually review this position. Thing is, I think we should really look at this position. Is it an HR position, or an Assistant Superintendent of Personnel, which it was at one time? This position's important in the School Department, and I think what we have to do, we should review as many alternatives as we can at this point, discuss it, perhaps on the Subcommittee of Personnel, or something to that effect. But I think before we just go on and ask a firm to get us some candidates, I think we should really look at the job and say, what are our expectations for this job? Because there are many issues that have been raised regarding this position, what it needs to do to encourage minority candidates, so many things that we expect of it, but let's look at what the job should look like, the job description, and the proper title. So I'm going to be requesting that, if that would be okay with, with the school committee, to have further discussion, expanded discussion of this. Because every one of you, at some point, have raised an issue of concern, and you've been correct. And I think everybody here wants to make sure that whoever we have, because Sue Mulligan's doing yeoman's work right now, and she was a former Assistant Superintendent in this area, and understands a lot of the issues. HR is, has one approach, and Assistant Superintendent for Personnel has another approach, and we should look at what's, what best meets the needs of Lowell School Department. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I absolutely agree with you, and I would actually say, if we could maybe have that in the form of a motion this evening, we could then move forward to call a, to poll for a Personnel Subcommittee, for the purposes of reviewing the current job description, current requirements of the position, with a plan towards coming up with a plan moving forward.
You just made my motion.
Look at that.
I'd like a second, second, Ms. Doherty. Will you please read the motion? If you can. You don't want time to write? My God.
To have a Personnel Subcommittee to review the, yeah.
The current, the current position of HR.
Thank you.
And review and suggest any other alternative approaches to this. Thank you. Yes?
I would just ask if we could do that as soon as possible. I would really like to be able to move forward in this stuff.
So, Ms. Martin, you'll poll, have the committee polled, your Subcommittee polled?
And again, in the hopes that anyone who's not on the Subcommittee would also certainly be welcome to come and be part of that conversation.
But I'd like the superintendent to have a little time to gather information together as to approaches you'd like to see at this particular point. Thank you. Any other questions that we got on that matter? Okay. We now have 4.3, Approval of Acting Superintendent's Recommendation to Appoint Mary Payne as Acting Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services. Before I ask for a motion, are there any questions from the committee regarding this? Mr. Dakota?
I had spoken to the acting superintendent earlier, and I was just wondering pay scales and so forth, and I'm, so I'm concerned about what are we going to be paying for that position? And, because obviously, we're spending a lot of money here, and I think we should be informed before we make a decision on that.
Assistant Superintendent?
So in light of the current circumstances and my acting position, I am, I really need an acting Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services to address the immediate needs that I should be attending to, and normally attend to, to prepare for the beginning of school. And also, not only the beginning of school, but once school begins, it is a very, very busy time in the Student Support Services office. Mary Payne has graciously agreed to come forward to do this role with no additional compensation at this time for consideration, and I, I felt that that was important to bring forward to you, because we, we are in the midst of an audit, and at which time, then, we can bring forward to you a contract for consideration.
Anything else, Mr. Dakota? You all set? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, and I apologize if there was information here that I didn't see, but I'm wondering if you could just tell us a little bit about Ms. Payne's background and how she's qualified to step into those very big shoes.
So Ms. Payne has been a Guidance Counselor in the district for, oh my.
Well, I've been a Guidance Counselor since 1996.
Step up, step up on the mic, please.
I started in Lowell in 1986, at Lowell High School as a student intern. I grew up here in Lowell. I grew up here in Lowell. From that position, I was hired as a peer advisor. I went back to school, became a Guidance Counselor. I've served in the role as a Behavior Modification Specialist, a Guidance Counselor, a Career Counselor at Lowell High School, and then as District Support Specialist at the district office.
Thank you, and so, all of those roles that Mary has served in, she's also served as Healthy Life Skills, and, and working with the, the school department as a Health Specialist in supporting our schools throughout the years. All of the roles that she has served in are all roles that fall within the realm of the student, the Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services. Not only that, but Mary Payne has intimately knows every staff member in the department by first name, and there would be no learning curve there, and that's a critical piece right now where we need, we need someone in this transition period. She has good working relationships. I think it's very important to note that she was, she's very humble, but she was nominated by her own union, all of her peers, as Administrator of the Year this year, so she is definitely someone who could step into the role and isn't afraid to ask questions when she doesn't have an answer. I have confidence that she could, she could serve in this role. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Hoy.
Real quick, Mayor, when you write a contract for her, or look at a contract, do we have to worry about how much time is in the contract? Because I'm just confused where the superintendent isn't fired yet, and everybody's acting, do we have to worry any legal things that we have to worry about this hire?
Madam Superintendent?
I'd ask Attorney Hall, who I've been working with on this for the last week, to respond.
Mr. Hoy, if we reach that point, the contract would specify that there'd be certain triggers which would allow her to revert back into LSAA and reattain her LSAA rights if Ms. Durkin went back into that role, or for some other reason.
Okay, thank you. How's that? Any other questions? Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, right now, to you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Mary Payne, are you a, now, a Guidance Counselor?
I, my certification, I do have a Guidance Certification.
But she's not a Guidance Counselor.
But you're not, you're not a Guidance Counselor?
No, I am not. I do not serve in that role.
Okay. My, my, my question would be, why are you doing both jobs? Could you handle both jobs? Are we, are we now, when you become an acting superintendent, does that mean now we're going to hire another person to take over your new job? Is that the path we're going to take?
So, we would have to discuss that, and consider an act, someone in an acting role for the district support role.
Okay.
Mr. Lay, you all set?
I, I feel like I have more questions, I just don't know what to ask now, because feels like now we, we are creating more issues, more money going to be spent on, on this process that we, that we are dealing with. When, when we voted last week for Ms. Durkin to be an assistant, to be an acting superintendent, well, that was a natural process, anyway. If we didn't even vote for you, you still become an acting, anyway, last week.
That's correct.
Right. And, and, but we voted on it, anyway, and for this time, by accepting this, Ms. Mary Payne to be an Assistant Superintendent, I just feel like we are, we are moving into another loop of creating more spending money.
Could, could I answer that a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay. What, what has happened, she's taken the position of the superintendent. As Deputy Superintendent, she would naturally be there anyways. She's left the position of Assistant Superintendent for, for Student Services. It's an, it's an open, empty position, so now, Ms. Payne will fill that position. It's there anyways, in her position. So the thing is, it's not like there's a lot of new salaries. It, it's almost like one, because there's a replacement of one. The superintendent's salary is the one that's outstanding. Every other position...
And I apologize, I, I tried to look for Ms. Mary Payne on the, on the, on the book, and I couldn't find her.
She's a District Support Specialist in Student Support Services.
And, and, may I ask, what, if, look, going forward, when we would be writing up a contract for her position, I'm sorry to have you standing there. How much salary increase percentage-wise are we looking at? Are we...
I think that's something we're going to have to negotiate, you know, with the candidate, and, but, this, it's, it's a big job. It is a big job. It has many departments that, that are required for the Assistant Superintendent to oversee. Too many to name here tonight, because I heard people wanted to be out early, but if I can, I would certainly be happy to bring those forward to you with the job, you know, the, the descriptions of everything that, the oversight of that position.
So I'm, I'm just curious, if by natural process, stepping up, I'm not sure if I'm saying this right, but you can correct me, Superintendent, if I'm, I'm wrong, but couldn't you allocate some of the work among the peers that already, among your team, instead of promoting someone else?
I, in good conscience, no. I could not do that. I really couldn't.
Okay. All right. Mr. Hoy, then, Mr. Nutter.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that if you look at the two jobs that were trying in the HR office, you got, under Mrs. Durkin's umbrella, when she was the Assistant Superintendent, I think there was just too many things she's responsible for. That's just my opinion. The same thing with HR. I think the HR, I should say the CFO, the new CFO, I think one of her hardest things will be half the dealing with the HR. But after talking to both of these candidates, I feel pretty secure with hiring both of them, and the reason being is, I think, she has 31 years, she's from the flats, that impressed me, and, well, and then she has Ms. Durkin to guide her through all these issues that she's going to face, so I think it's going to be good for the school committee.
Thank you, Mr. Hoy. Thanks. Mr. Nutter?
I, I just want to be clear, so that everyone understands. Right now, we have a, a superintendent who's out on administrative leave. Mrs. Durkin, in her role, gets no increased salary at this point for being the acting superintendent. Ms. Payne is getting no additional funds at this point for taking over as the Assistant Superintendent in charge of student services. So, Mr. Lay, right now, we're not adding any additional cost to this. What we're just, what Mrs. Durkin is trying to do is to put a, a team in place so that we're able to function as a school department until such time as everything gets cleared up, and then they'll come back to us as needed to fill those positions and talk about salary and all that. Correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Did I say, I mean, my statement was, there is one salary that's outstanding, and that's the posi-, the salary for the superintendent who's on leave at this point. That's the only difference.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Yes.
Thank you. So, would that be legal to have, like, a short, I don't know how you say it, I know Mr. Hall would be able to answer that, if, should we write something to, to say that, you know, that we're not paying her anything extra for assuming this?
Excuse me, the superintendent's going to negotiate that, there's going to be a negotiation for that. I think we'd be tying her hands up at this point if we do that. Is that what you want to do?
No, no, I don't mean to tie her hands, but I think it would be, would that be appropriate or, or legal way to do it, by saying that this is something, when we vote on, we're not, we're not accepting verbally?
You can make a motion. Do you want to make a motion? No, a substitute mo-, are you trying for a substitute motion?
I don't know, I just want to hear from a counselor if, if we could do that.
Do what?
Write something very short, saying that, you know, that we accept, we, we promote Ms. Mary Payne to take a role as an acting Assistant Superintendent without additional pay.
I mean, you're now, you're creating a whole different scenario at this point. So, we have a motion on the floor to have this vote, but we can have a substitute motion. Is there any second to that motion? There's no second, it fails. Mr. Dakota.
While we're on this subject, is there a possibility that sometime in the near future that we could get a, the job descriptions for those two positions, for the HR and the Deputy Superintendent, so that we have that to look at as well?
I, I will certainly bring that forward, be, there will be, my understanding from tonight's meeting, there's going to be a Subcommittee meeting for the Personnel, for the HR, so that would, would go forward there. I can also forward the Assistant Superintendent's position.
Thank you.
And probably any other examples that you might need to, you know, review that? Okay, thank you. Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just to, to go back one step with Mr. Lay's concerns, I, I do think it's important to note that what we're approving tonight is the recommendation. What comes next is the actual contract, so that's when there's going to be a number attached to it, and then we will make our decision, yea or nay, if you support whatever the, the superintendent has negotiated. So this, voting yes tonight doesn't mean that you're approving a salary number, you wouldn't be doing that until we got a finalized contract, that then, that we'd then be voting on, probably, I'm guessing, soon, in the next couple of meetings. I don't know if that helps.
On Mr. Nutter's motion, and there was a second? Mr. Hall, do you have something?
Just briefly, Mayor, if I may, Mr. Lay, I think what Mr. Lay is trying to point out is that he wants to make the, this appointment be subject to confirming LSAA is not going to object and ask for further clarif-, compensation, because she is an LSAA member. We have from Ms. Payne that she's willing to do the additional duties now. I have had discussions preliminarily with LSAA, but we don't have anything in writing from them yet, so I think that's what Mr. Lay was...
Could I say, what I heard him say, what, he did not want to give her any more money than what she's presently making?
Right now, yes, Mayor, right now, Ms. Mrs. Payne has agreed to help out for the time being, and LSAA hasn't objected, but I think...
That's what's stated by the...
Right. I think the acting superintendent said in the future, they'll come back with a contract, but it is a point to clarify that LSAA potentially could ask for compensation, so if there wants to be a friendly addition, saying subject to LSAA's agreement, I, that may be something you want to consider.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call. There was a second, I believe, Ms. Doherty seconded Mr. Nutter's motion? No.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Sikshay's one day approved.
Okay. All right, under, we're, we're ready for adjournment, but under Mayor's business and the City Council, I'm able to bring up certain issues that are current, and I'd like to bring up one issue and ask the superintendent to speak on it. I was concerned about the scheduling at, at the high school, and I just think we should have, make sure we have an update at the various meetings to ensure that we have a schedule for opening day of school. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That last school committee meeting, the special meeting that we had, I reported, I had been in communication with the head of school, and she had assurances from the scheduler that, you know, the, the schedule would be complete for the start of the school year. Since that time, I've gotten some conflicting information that's come from, not from the head of school, so I contacted the head of school and the, the scheduler, who was in charge of creating it at Lowell High School. I met with them last week, and is, I just wanted to share with the committee that he is assuring us he is going to be able to complete the schedule. It is going to take anywhere from 100 to 150 additional hours, which were pre-approved prior to my being in this position, so that he is working on that. We made a plan that, we said that, you know, there might have been extenuating circumstances, but going forward, this cannot happen again, that we need to have a plan in place for December that we share with the committee about how we're going to roll out the schedule, and that there will be no additional compensation for someone doing their job. So, the, the, what I did get, and I thank the head of school who's here today, did get an update today, that the schedule is 50% complete at this point, the freshman academy being complete, lyceum complete, advisory's completed with a few minor tweaks, business department is complete, PE and health are currently in progress, as well as culinary, foreign language, which is starting tomorrow, and special ed is still in progress. They have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow to address some of the outstanding things that are giving them a few problems in the special ed area. So, the core classes are going in, but waiting on one department should be resolved, that's a special ed tomorrow. So that's the update, and I thank Marion Bastid for that today.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Could you just remind us what were the circumstances, that they are 100 to 150 hours behind on the scheduling?
So, Ms. Bastid is here, and she can speak to that, however, I, you can let me know if I've got it correct, so what was reported to me was that there was an initial decision through the budget process to eliminate some freshman academy staff to reduce the cluster model, but when the, the registrations, the kept coming in, and the students were coming in, that the numbers were going up high, so they had to change, they had to change their whole thinking and reassess which classes would be reduced with the, the budget cuts that were made, so that was one of the factors. The, the other factors were related to our heating issues at the high school and the extensive snow days that pushed out the grades and all of that work that traditionally would be done a bit sooner. So those, am I correct? Did I get everything clear?
Mr. Hoy.
Mayor, before you adjourn, we, if you don't mind, I didn't come prepared, prepared for this, but two really good athletes from Lowell High have passed away. One is the brother of Marty Laurie, James Jimbo Laurie that I grew up with, and also Raymond Chung Rivera that played for the University of Houston, so I don't know if we could have a quick, a moment of silence before we adjourn?
They most certainly deserve that.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that up. We'll have a moment of silence. Knock in the chambers. Thank you, Mr. Hoy, for bringing that up. I, I just wanted to finish off, my concern about the high school schedules, we worked in the past to make sure that the teachers received their schedules as they left school, and the students had... teachers received their schedules as they left school, and the students had their schedules left school, because the teachers, especially if their class schedules change or their programs change, they wanna be able to prepare during the summer for that. And so I'm very concerned that this happened, and I'm sure that Ms. Durkin will be on top of it. Thank, Mr. Nutter?
I don't know if I need to request a suspension or whether we're in suspension, but it has come to my attention that there's going to be a story in tomorrow's newspaper or the day after regarding the situation of whether Lowell High will have a pool this fall. I knew nothing, I didn't know there was an issue with the pool. So if you could give us any information on that through the superintendent or the head of school, I would just love a quick update.
Madam Superintendent, if you want. Go ahead.
So, I just learned of these, these issues this week as well. So I have been in communication with the head of school. I am meeting with the city manager tomorrow and a team with, along with Ricky Underwood and their staff, who've been assessing the work. So I will have more for you, but at this time, I don't have a whole lot of specifics, but they have been working to consider if potentially UMass Lowell could support our student athletes with their swimming through use of shuttles, and so that is something that we have to look at at this time.
Could I, I'll add to this, but this information is coming in as we're speaking, but the issue is how much it would cost to replace all of the heating equipment in the swimming pool, okay? And the question is whether we have swimming this year or not. Most likely, we're heading to not having it, and the thing, but the issue is the swim team for the boys and girls. There's negotiation with the University of Lowell for that, but there's other information as could there be any type of temporary repair, but we're talking about a lot of money, and that's being discussed. So the information is coming into the city manager's office at this point. It will be discussed with the superintendent, Acting Superintendent, and the head of schools, and we'll provide that information to the school committee as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Mr. Hoi, seconded by Mr. Lay. Thank you.